Notice to hereby give that a meeting of the City Council Committee on Government Services co-posted with the Committee of the Whole will be held on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, at 6:30 PM in person at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor, via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022. For the purpose of discussing applicants interested in appointment to the Community Preservation Committee or the Tree Commission, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate, listen, and/or view this meeting while in progress via remote participation platform Zoom through any one of the following ways. Please click the link below, password 291131, or call the toll-free number, webinar ID 853-7432-8069. The subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purpose of making recommendations to the full council. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means in the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing. We'll post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communication such as sign language interpreter, assistive listening device, or print material in digital format or a reasonable modification in program, services, policies, or activities may contact the City of Salem's ADA Coordinator at 978-619-5630 as soon as possible, no less than two business days before the meeting program or event. Agenda applicants interested in appointment to the Community Preservation Committee or Tree Commission. In attendance, we have councilors from the committee, we have Councilors Varela, McLean, myself, and Counselor Cohen. And from the Committee of the Whole, we have Counselor McCarthy, we have Counselor Merkel, Counselor Dominguez, and Counselor President Patty Morcello. We also have with us applicants Katie Goldfield, Jane Rumrell, Maria Connell, Kate Martin, Jeremy Neely, okay, I was going to ask you before the meeting, and Ed Moriarty. Okay, so we're going to try to, as humanly possible, that we're able to try to get this done in under an hour if possible. We may go over, we do have two different posts that we're filling here. The way we're going to do this is bring up candidates one by one and just give about 10 minutes or so for councilors to ask questions. We've all reviewed the resumes, asked any questions we wanted to ask, so just a chance to answer some questions. If you enjoy being interviewed, you get to do this in a public format, so just appreciate your patience here, this is the only way that we can do this. And also just want to thank you all for your willingness to serve everybody here, we're thankful and grateful in Salem that we have very qualified candidates that are willing to fill these board positions. So any questions before we get started? Okay, so I think what we'll do first is start with the Tree Commission. And Katie Goldfield, if you're willing to come up, we'll start with you.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you.
Oh, you may want to, is your...
Right into the microphone, okay, how's that?
So Katie, we appreciate you coming up here. Any councilors have any questions for Kate? I know you've all had a chance to review the... Counselor Cohen.
I just volunteer in this as a suggestion that we let each one of them speak for a minute, you know, maybe talk about why they're doing this in a way that we can't read.
If you'd like to speak or, you know, say your piece, then you're able to.
I know you've already seen my application, so you know that I've been a resident of Salem for 28 years, but I'm a child of the North Shore, I've never lived more than a couple of miles from Salem. So this is something that is near and dear to me. My undergraduate background in my career now is in horticulture, and urban trees and parklands and open spaces were of a particular focus of mine in my undergraduate studies, which was a long time ago, so I'm not going to ride on that. But I have a small, I operate a small horticultural and gardening service, and I, in the course of my work, I do quite a bit of tree care and of course, recognize the incredible importance of having urban tree cover, especially as we have more and more development. So my focus in the past 10 years or so has been towards encouraging an increase in not only in the number of the trees, but trees that are appropriate for the site and for the environment that they're growing in. And one of the biggest challenges I see in Salem and other communities on the North Shore is having varieties of trees that may not be the best species for the environment, that may be subject to desiccation, blight, and illnesses that are because they're not really meant to be in areas with high foot traffic, high traffic volume, and other such activities. So that was something that I've been focusing on in recent years and encouraging my customers, my client base, in using species that, not necessarily native, but are appropriate, the right plant for the right place. And I see the same thing for the City of Salem. Education is also very important to me, public education. I educate my clients, but I'm also in the adjunct faculty at North Shore Community College, and I've taught in the Horticultural Degree Program there for 10 years now. And a lot of our students coming in are interested in arboriculture and urban tree care, urban forestry. So we're training a number of people who are going to be going out into the world, and it's a good training ground for me because it puts my finger on the pulse of what's going on in the tree care industry as well, which is germane to what we need to know in the city. So without belaboring anything further, because there are other people who need a turn to speak, I'll just say that this is something that I've been interested in for quite some time. I didn't know that there were openings until one of the former general members contacted me and said, "I'm stepping down this June, would you please take my place?" And I said, "Well, that's up to other people to decide, but I certainly will throw my hat into the ring for it." So I thank you for the opportunity to speak. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you. I'll just note that we are filling two positions on the Tree Commission, so we're filling one member of the general public and one alternate from the general public. We're also in need of a, for anyone listening at home, we are in need of an arborist still on the commission. I'll also note that Counselor Carty has joined us remotely. Any questions from the committee or from the Committee of the Whole? Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not being a member of the committee, and I want to thank you for your willing to serve our great city. I had the opportunity to meet you, I'm off a roll, and I think you house represent exactly the knowledge that you have on all of the trees, and that's very, very valuable. You mentioned one thing that I wanted to follow and ask you. What would be your recommendation to correct the situation that we have in Salem where you mentioned that we have some of these trees that are not really very healthy to have? What do you recommend to the City of Salem to do to try to change that as soon as possible?
Okay. One of my first recommendations is to be in communication with the Urban Tree Care, the Urban Tree Canopy Program, individuals in the DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, where Salem has been pointed as one of the gateway cities which is eligible to receive free trees, and they're not just free trees, they're trees that are appropriate for this environment. Dave Bresnahan is the person who is the liaison, and he's done some remarkable work getting trees planted around the North Shore. That would be one, that would be a good resource to start with. The other is, the work is already done for the trees that are not doing well. You might notice along Canal Street and the IUB bypass area, we have a lot of the native acer rubrum, the native red maples, which have been suffering mightily due to lack of water, not just from this drought, but because it's the way that the trees are planted, not necessarily that they're the wrong species, but that they're not given adequate space, tree space, for water and oxygen and also nutrients to circulate into the soil. What they are is they're corralled into pavement with very small windows. Now, I understand and I recognize that space is very limited, but rather than try to cram a lot of trees in a small space and give them all small areas, maybe we'd do better to have fewer trees, take out some of those trees, give the existing ones larger, open space areas so that they can breathe and so that they can receive water and nutrients from the environment. So those would be two things right off the top of my head. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
Counselor President Morcello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not being a member of the committee, but being liaison to the Tree Commission, I'm just going to ask a question of all of the candidates. It's clear by listening to the meetings that there's more than just attendance at the meeting that would be desirable. And so my question is, how much time do you think you have outside of the meeting time and your job and your normal day-to-day activities to get involved in like some of the little subgroup activities that they're trying to do and research and all that kind of stuff?
Well, I have to talk to my boss about the free time, and she's kind of a taskmaster. I am self-employed, so that does give me some flexibility. The only things that are graven in stone are my teaching hours, which right now I'm only teaching one course a semester on Fridays at North Shore. So for the most part, my schedule is one that's in my control. And of course, it's also weather-based. If I have a rainy day, I can spend endless hours doing research because I can't work. But yes, I have a lot of flexibility, and I gave that a lot of thought because speaking to Ms. Melis about, you know, the kinds of projects and activities that she would like to incorporate into this position, I recognized and realized right away, this is something that's going to be a commitment. I would not offer to do it, I would not let myself, you know, impose myself on the Tree Commission if I did not have the time to put into it. And thank you.
Any other questions? I guess one question for me, just a general question. I guess, A, have you served in other, either boards or commissions or either city or otherwise? And just in general, within groups, how have you worked with people when you disagreed with them strongly?
I've never served on a committee before, but I did work in public relations for 25 years, so for a large nonprofit educational organization. So that required a great deal of interaction with other people, also being able to communicate, being able to take other people's messages and couch them in media that other people would be able to understand, and also taking part in large intensive meetings that required a great deal of teamwork to carry off, and projects as well. So I guess that's what I would put forth as my qualifications in that part.
Thank you, Katie. No other questions for Katie?
Thank you all very much. Anything else?
All good. Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Jane Rumrell.
So my name is Jane Rumrell. I work for a local land trust where I'm the events and outreach manager. A lot of my qualifications stem from my experience working with this organization, but I grew up in the Finger Lakes region of New York and spent my summers in Adirondack, so I'm a big fan of nature and of trees generally, and part of the reason that we, my partner and I moved out here from New York specifically to Salem was because of its green space and access to the wider regional green space. So I wanted to mention that I'm a former teacher as well, so public outreach and educational opportunities for the public are really important to me and something that I have a lot of experience in creating. In my current position, I put together a film and lecture series every year and a series of free public events having to do with ecology, climate change, water quality, every ecological topic you can think of. So I come up with the themes for those and the specific topics and look for our guest speakers for those things. I also do a lot of work with our volunteers. I manage a large group of about 50 outdoor leadership volunteers who guide some of our hikes and come help us with our events and come help us generally with some things in the office and so on. And I also put together our volunteer appreciation events for that group and manage that whole list and make sure that they keep coming back. Another thing that I have some experience with that I think would be helpful for the Tree Commission is that I've worked in ArcGIS before, which is a mapping tool that I know the Tree Commission has used for the Salem Tree Inventory, which is a phenomenal project and really, really useful data for making decisions for, you know, urban forest management here in Salem. And I also wanted to mention that in the course of my job, I also am privileged to be able to attend a bunch of conferences and workshops having to do with climate resiliency, urban heat islands, you know, tree identification, invasive and native plant species, and plans, and I think I listed a bajillion of those on my letter to all of you, but I think I'll stop there and let you ask any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, not being a member of the committee. I want to also thank you for your willingness to serve. My question to you is related to, you mentioned you were a former teacher, and I know how important it is to be able to teach the diverse community that we have. And one of the, I think, one of the things that we've seen is the growing population that we have in Salem from different cultures, different backgrounds. Mainly, when I speak about that, I talk about my own community, the Latino community, I'm not very educated on how to maintain the environment in some instance. And we see how the grow population, the Latinos, is getting more into, own their own houses and stuff like that. Do you think, or do you have any type of plan in mind to try to help in that regard to educate the diverse community that we have in Salem?
Well, as a former French teacher, I'm a big fan of providing materials in different languages. So, and I actually have a translation certificate in French as well, so I'm a big fan of getting things translated so that everyone can approach them in their own language. I also want to refer back to the fact that I think we can and should leverage a huge community of volunteers that we have in Salem. I know that there are people in every community who are interested in supporting the urban forests in Salem, so I think that putting together some, you know, the volunteer force to get out into each of our different communities and communicate that importance and just education generally in terms of caring for our neighborhood trees and that sort of thing. Yeah.
Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for joining us tonight, appreciate it. Can you speak generally to how you came to learn about the vacancy on the Tree Commission and what motivated you to sort of go beyond that general enjoyment that most people have of, "I enjoy nature, so I'm going to go for a hike" versus, "I'm going to join a public commission"?
Yeah. Let's see, where did I first see it? I just, I follow everything that Jeff posts online, and I think he had posted the vacancy quite a while ago, and so I saw it there. And Jeff had actually been talking to me about the potential to, you know, apply to a commission, and so I had had that on my mind for quite a few months, and then this opportunity came up, and I thought Tree Commission would be perfect, and I looked into, you know, more of the details of it and all of the amazing work that has happened so far and how we've gotten, you know, this incredible grant opportunity from the Greening the Gateway Cities Program and how we have such a boost to our tree inventory right now where we can really do some good work, some positive steps forward. It's all there and ready to go. So, you know, that's why I decided to step up. I thought, I can finally do something about that. And also, of course, this summer had a big impact on me, seeing some of my neighborhood trees dying from the heat and the drought, and, you know, seeing some of the ones, I enjoy the new bike path, and of course, some of those trees were incorrectly planted, and watching them die off has been really heartbreaking, so I think that was also part of what pushed me to apply. Yeah.
Counselor Morcello.
Thank you. Same question to you about kind of extra time for working on projects within the commission.
Yeah, I, for the most part, determine my schedule outside of the nine to five because I get to schedule all the events for my job, so I can avoid Mondays or I can avoid, you know, whatever day of the week I need to be around, and I already do a lot of learning on my own. It's my choice. Most of these workshops that I described were my choice to sign up for, so it's a time commitment that I think that I've already shown that I'm interested in doing, and I would definitely be able to shift that from, you know, just kind of general interest to time put into Tree Commission work.
And I'll ask the same question that I asked earlier. Have you served in other boards, commissions, or worked with other groups, and how have you worked with people when you've disagreed with them?
I haven't served on any municipal commissions, but at my job, I serve on both the staff DEIJ committee, and I'm also the liaison to the board DEI committee. You know, differing levels of interest and knowledge in both of those committees, and it's been interesting and enlightening to be able to work with people on such a pertinent topic in regards to land conservation specifically. And there've definitely been disagreements within that, and I've had to, you know, present some of our recommendations to wider groups and have had some pushback on that. And, you know, if something's important to me, of course, I'm going to stand up for what's important to me. And let's see here, you know, I am also the manager for a number of very large events at my work, one of which is an art show that brings in over 1,000 people at least over the course of a weekend, so I have no trouble interacting with surly customers from time to time, or, you know, dissatisfied people, or people who just have questions and don't understand. So that's never been a problem with me because the buck kind of stops at me at work, so I have to be able to handle that.
Any other questions for Jane? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And next, we'll have Maria, is it Connell? Maria Connell.
So, good evening, councilors and non-members of the council, however you phrase that. I know I'm supposed to speak into this, sorry, Jeff, okay. About a minute background here, so I'm a lifelong resident of Salem, and earlier this year, I reached out to Jeff's wife, as a matter of fact, for full disclosure, to ask about what opportunities were around to get involved with tree initiatives. Sort of went back and forth for a little bit, just talking about general volunteer projects that I'm involved with, native plant nursery, and various initiatives, sort of grassroots around the city. And about two months or so ago, Flora reached out and mentioned there was an opening on the Tree Commission and if I was still interested, you know, to pursue it. So I've had some time to talk to a couple of councilors, obviously Ms. Melis, I've spent some time, and also attended some of the, actually, the past two meetings of the Tree Commission, so I think I have a good handle on what's going on and how I might be of service to the group. By trade, I'm an accountant, I'm a businessperson, so I don't have the background as a teacher or arborist or anything like that, but I'm very passionate about nature, and I think you all have my resume and my application, so you know that I'm on the Salem Garding Club, and I do a bunch of, just again, more on the grassroots side of the house so far. I think this opportunity is pretty interesting, and my ability to maybe bring a different perspective, I think, would be sort of helpful. I'm big into ROI, so when you're misplanting trees, even if I don't really understand yet what are the appropriate trees, I do understand investments over time and what sort of makes sense for sort of getting the biggest bang for your buck, if you will. I think that was a little over a minute, but I tried to manage to that.
You're good.
Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Connell? Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you so much for your willingness to serve. As you mentioned, your background is on numbers, and you related pretty good. How can you effectively translate those knowledge to the expertise on tree, which I think is very interesting? You say that you bring a unique perspective because you come from a different industry, as you say, but what do you, beside helping with that area, what else can you say that you must be an asset to the Tree Commission based on your own experience?
Let's see, so how I would best be an asset for the Commission, like I said, really understanding that ROI and, you know, in time, I would get a better handle on appropriate trees versus things that aren't going to do so well in time or when they get saltwater on them or items like that. I'm a lifelong learner and sort of a glutton for punishment in that way because, as I'm going to answer the question about time commitment coming up, I sort of just make time for areas that I'm interested in, and to the extent that I lack knowledge in something that I'm passionate about, I'm going to invest, you know, and figure out sort of what makes the most sense. And that might be an asset to the Commission because I have that fresh perspective and like eagerness to really know what's going on, so.
Thank you.
So regarding time and the commitment, I think one of the first items that I asked Ms. Melis was, what is the commitment here? What am I signing up for? How does the Tree Commission interact with the councilors? I do have a tendency to burn the candle at both ends, I've just sort of done that my entire life, and I would find time and sort of stand by, you know, any commitment that I've made to volunteer. I think there's plenty of time in any given week to do that. I work full-time, I recently started my own business, I'm the treasurer for the Rose Society, which tie gets to your question on serving on boards, so I feel like I have a full plate. But again, for areas that I'm passionate about, I'm just going to find the time for it.
Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for joining us also, appreciate it. So I did look at your resume, and I see that you volunteer in a number of locations, a couple here in Salem, and so my question for you is similar to the one I asked before, but with the twist of, you're already somewhat participating in some of the things you're passionate about, so what inspired you to sort of take on this lane change and say, "I'm going to go from the grassroots level to sort of this commission level"?
I'd say a big source of inspiration in 2022 was the fact that in February, I was out on the West Coast, and I sat in an old grove garden and just had really sort of a spiritual connection with trees that are very, very old, and I felt really sort of moved, and as I mentioned, I had reached out to Counselor Cohen's wife earlier this year to sort of keep pursuing that extra level of inspiration. So, yeah, I think that sort of covers it.
Yeah, and just one follow-up, so take that experience you had on the West Coast, come back to Salem. What is your sense of the environment when you're moving around the Salem space? What do you see when you look at the tree and plant life in our city? What do you see as the need? What do you see as working well?
Certainly, since I'm not a trained arborist or, you know, haven't come out of the agricultural space, I see the city in sort of, you know, a different lens, which again, that lens is sort of what I think is unique and what I'm offering to the Commission that's different. Overall, I think the fact that Salem has been a tree city in the US program for several years is really good, and it means that we're doing some things right, but I think everywhere there's always room for improvement. And when you drive down streets, I grew up in the Point, and my mom still lives on Prince Street, and I can see, you know, there's plenty of trees that were newly planted but never followed up on, and they're just dying. And you don't have to be a trained arborist to say like, "Oh, that's, there's a problem right there, so how do you fix it?" And becoming a part of that solution, I think, is, you know, that's what the inspiration is, is like, "How can I do better for these trees?" Yep.
And I'll just ask again, I know you sort of addressed it, but just, how do you, when you have disagreements among groups that you've worked with, how have you dealt with those kind of situations?
One of my just initial level-setting points is to listen and make sure that I'm getting all of the opinions and inputs, so that even if it's something that I might know and know what the right answer is, I can at least understand where folks are coming know, and know what the right answer is, I can at least understand where folks are coming from. In this space, as I've said a few times now, I actually, you know, am admittedly not trained in this, so the fact that I'll be able to listen and sort of be a facilitator, I think, in conversations and disagreements, will prove to be another good sort of asset for the commission.
Thank you. Council McCarthy.
Thank you. Since you already answered Counselor Musillo's question, I'll ask one. Just knowing that your address, you're just across the street from a major park renovation that occurred, and not talking about the construction itself, because those are issues I had, but with regards to what you witnessed, is there, with the public process that we had going through and selecting a design and whatnot, when you look out your window and you look at what was transpired with the trees, what would you have done, what would you think you might have done differently?
It's interesting, for lunch today, we walked down to the Clam Shack, because it's closing this weekend, and going down a few of the paths, I was saying, you know, I don't necessarily recognize every tree or plant that's in there for being native or whatnot, and I think the importance of folks who are involved with initiatives like this, and actually figuring out what's native, what's going to work long-term, based on how the park is now, I feel like not all of that was vetted upfront, but we're just going to sort of see how things play out. I know the company had to come back and correct whatever topsoil they put down had really awful weeds in it.
Bless you.
And so, you know, always room for improvement, and as we continue to do other programs like this across the city, I think there just needs to be really good vetting ahead of time, and I don't know to the extent the tree commission would have been involved with that process, or what other groups get involved, but I think having the feedback of, you know, other stakeholders is really important.
Good. I'll be happy to announce that we just received Phase Two of funding from the MVP grant, so Phase Two of the Willis Project will be happening at some point, hopefully.
That's awesome. Oh, sorry to break that news, if you didn't already know, the 25th is the final date for the Clam Shack. Oh, boy.
There's no other questions for Ms. Connell, thank you.
Yeah, thanks everyone for your consideration. I think the other two applicants are totally lovely, and what I'll say is, no matter what, I'll be volunteering in my grassroots way, however this pans out, so, thank you.
Thank you. Council McCarthy.
If I could just make one statement, I just want to, A, thank everyone for showing up tonight. This process, because we are a body, is way different than what occurs on the mayor's side of things, on the administrative side. The administrative side, they'll vet out the applicants, they'll do their internal discussions, and then they'll let everyone know, "Oh, thanks, but no thanks, we decided to go in a different direction". But we do, because we're a body, we have to do everything in a public forum, so it's a little different, is the fact that we have to bring everyone in and, you know, interview you in public, in front of everybody, and then, I guess, I'm not sure what's going to happen tonight, I'm not a member of the committee, and what recommendation will go back to the full council for consideration, but I just want to thank everyone, this is a different type of situation for being appointed to a board. We do this for a couple of different boards and commissions, but it's unique, but it's, I really give everyone credit for standing up in voice in their beliefs and why they think they're the candidate that needs to fill these slots, and I think that you're all immensely qualified, and you bring different perspectives, but I think that each one of you would be an asset to the commission, so thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Con.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. So much of how we benefited as a community is due to the industry and diligence of the volunteers who staff our boards and commissions, and I served seven years as a vice chair of one, and nine years as a chair or co-chair of the other, and I don't think I'll ever figure out how I can achieve as much as a counselor as I was able to do as a board, working with other volunteers. And so, I'm personally grateful for the quality of candidates we have, and I guess I know every one of you directly or indirectly. I do want to make a comment, I met Darlene during the whole LoRex process, and the people who were on LoRex were tremendous, from David to Flora to Kurt, and Darlene, and Polly, and other people, and it was really an important move for Salem, because that became the commission. I do feel very much that one of the things that needs to happen in the next year or two, so hopefully you'll be part of this, and Darlene and I have talked about this, is the ordinance needs to be upgraded. It's terrific, but it doesn't apply to enough of Salem, and I know you guys are all going to work hard. Is it appropriate for me to make a motion?
Yeah, you can take a motion, I'll just, real quickly, I'll just echo the comments from Counsel McCarthy, just, we have two appointments we're going to make for this one specifically. Three great candidates, appreciate you all coming in here. I'll say, just, not that I am anyone's measuring stick, but I sat in your position a few years ago for the CPC and was not chosen, so just hope that you continue to serve if you don't move on, and you could be an at-large counselor someday if you decide to do that. And I will take a motion right now, I think the first motion potentially, so we have two positions available right now, so one, a member of the general public, and one alternate from the general public, so I think potentially the appropriate motion would be from the general public first, and a separate one for the alternate.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, and like I said, we as a city should be very proud to have such terrific people standing in front of us. I'm going to move that Ms. Goldfield is appointed to the full position, as a recommendation to the full council.
Counselor Cohen, motions that Katie Goldfield be appointed to the member of the general public. Do we have a second? Second from Counselor McLean. Under discussion? No discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Hapworth. I think that Ms. Goldfield has shown through some of the work, and some of it I've witnessed, you know, cutting down bittersweet, some of the things that she's done in the community, even at her own house, are really the kind of things that can be examples for our community, and, you know, this is not taken away from either of the other candidates, but I do feel like she, in my estimation, is the right person to fill that position.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On the motion from Counselor Cohen to appoint Katie Goldfield, or to recommend the appointment of Katie Goldfield to the tree commission, Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that's three members voting, three in the affirmative. And just as a reminder, this is a recommendation to the full council, the full council tomorrow will take a vote on this. And for the, if anyone would like to make a second motion? What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. Four members voting, four in the affirmative, including myself. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. I'd like to move that we recommend Ms. Rumril to be the alternate for the tree commission.
Counselor Cohen recommends recommending Jane Rumril as the alternate from the general public. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Varela. Counselor Cohen?
Yeah, this is not a reflection on Ms. Connell, but in my interactions with Jane, it's been really someone who has wanted to participate in our, you know, in the community, and I'm constantly telling people that you don't have to be a counselor, nothing against being an at-large or a ward counselor, but if people have a passion for a certain subject, or how we can resolve things in the city, being on a board like the tree commission can make a big difference, and that's how she's impressed me individually.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
No.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so it's four members voting, three in the affirmative, one in the negative. And thank you, thank you, members of the tree commission, or applicants to the tree commission, we will vote on this tomorrow night. You can stick around if you'd like, yeah, there you go. You can stick around if you'd like to, or you can head out, either one, we'll be here for another half hour or so, hopefully.
Could you get us a tree warden, please? Look at that salary, it's incredible.
Would love a tree warden. What's that? And just for everyone's information, we'll go Kate Jeremy Ed. Okay, and we will do the CPC now, so we'll have Kate Martin.
Hello, my name is Kate Martin. I am an architect with a passion for historic preservation, and I am applying to be a member of the CPC because, well, really for two reasons. One is, I moved to Salem a little bit under five years ago, and it changed my life, I love it here, this is my forever home, and so I'm just looking for a way to serve the community with whatever experience and skills I might have. And the second is that, in my hometown, there was an old house that was about to be torn down, and CPA funds are what saved it from demolition. I volunteered in the group that was trying to work to save that house, so CPA funds me a lot to me, I've seen them, what they can do, and how they can really change people's lives, so, yeah, I'm excited for the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions for Kate? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. We have a, thanks to the city council, last year, we have a sustainability and resiliency department, not just a sustainability or energy manager, we have a sustainability, energy, and resiliency commission, committee. We're enduring the effects of the climate crisis, and I noticed that you have experience and education in sustainable design, and so, like, if possible for you to talk about how you feel that that would be an asset to serving on this board?
Sure, yeah, my graduate thesis was on sustainable design, and I'm LEED GA certified. I think that would bring, A, it brings expertise, someone who has seen how buildings can be designed to be more sustainable, how you can also improve existing buildings to be more sustainable. I had a mentor who called preservation radical common sense, the idea of preserving something is the most green thing that you can do. And then specifically, like, in my graduate thesis, I use a lot of the programs that monitor whether or not something is actually sustainable, so like, daylighting, you know, all the passive strategies, things like that, so, at the very least, I can speak the language. If an applicant comes and wants to speak to the sustainability of their design, I have some of the verbiage, technical experience, and then the rest of it, I think, is like, you know, we see what gets built around Salem, and we know that water is going to be an issue, so I think there's, you know, a lot of opportunity for things to be built in a greener way as we go forward.
Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, once again, Kail, for the willingness to serve. My question is related into the historical part of Salem, Salem being one of the historical places. How knowledgeable are you on the history of Salem to fit the position that you are applying for, in a way that you be an asset to the commission?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I work with enough actual architectural historians to know that I am not an expert. There are people who know a lot more about historic buildings than I do. However, I, you know, every single day at my job, I'm working with historic buildings, so I do have personal experience with it. I think it's one of those things where the more you learn about historic buildings, the more you know you don't know. Specifically with regards to Salem, you know, it's something that, I've lived here for five years, I've been learning a lot about it, and I've definitely met people in the community who know a lot more than me about it, so it's something that I currently have an interest in, I currently have some knowledge in, and I also know that there's a lot more to be learned, and I like to think that no one will ever have all the information on the history of Salem, so I guess I would say, I'm knowledgeable, I'm interested, and I'm certainly not an expert.
Counsel Varela?
Thank you, Chair Hapworth, and thank you, Kate, for taking the time to be here with us tonight. So, if you were appointed, how could we improve funding for smaller projects concerning the CPA allocation? I understand that it has a lot to do with the ranking, however, we have a lot of projects that are always not funded, and that are always on the smaller side. If you were to be appointed to the CPC, how would you advocate for the smaller projects to be, that would be funded fairly?
Yeah. I imagine, I have not served on this commission before, but I imagine that the core role of someone on this commission is to balance the need to protect the funds that the residents have given us to improve their city, and also the opportunity that every project presents, and I think to answer your question about specifically smaller projects, I think it would be to approach every proposal with optimism, and with seeking an opportunity, and looking for, I mean, those small projects can make such a difference, this is one of those things that, you know, you don't need to have a huge project to make a huge change, and so I think I would just, I think it'd be more about an outlook and a perspective and an attitude of respecting every person who comes before the committee with a proposal, and they have an idea for how to improve Salem, and trying to respect that, and look for the opportunity in their proposal.
Thank you. Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for joining us. Similar question that I've asked to some of the other folks who have come to the podium to tell us a little bit about what motivated you to get involved at this level, but, excuse me, I'll actually ask you sort of a slightly different question, because I find your resume really interesting, and so I'm also curious, not just what motivated you to seek a commission location, but what motivated you to seek this particular commission? Because I think there are any number of bodies that you may have had sort of enough knowledge to say, "I could get involved here, I could get involved there", so what is it about the CPC in particular that made you feel you should throw your hat in here?
Sure, thank you. Two things, it's, I'm interested in it, I'm also intimidated by it, because it seems to me to be a commission that has a lot of impact. You know, funding these projects makes physical change, I go by Proctor Ledge all the time, I know that that was funded by CPA funds, so the reason I specifically was interested in this commission was, A, my personal experience, just a house I love was going to get torn down, my local CPC funded the preservation of it, and it stands today, and that, I mean, that meant a lot to me. And the second reason is just, I feel like this commission is, means a huge responsibility because of the amount of impact you can actually make, it just seems to me to be important, and I guess I'm eager to be as helpful as I can be, and to do something important.
Sure. And one additional question. Have you had an opportunity to either attend or watch some of the CPC meetings over the last series? And if so, kind of what's your impression of the body, and what do you think you would bring to that mix?
I have not watched past meetings, I read through all the meeting notes, and my impression is that it's super important. And my impression is that super important conversations are happening. I, I found myself really enjoying the dialogue that the committee members had and understanding the importance of decisions that they're making. And I guess my overall impression is just that coming into those conversations with an open mind. And I'm a little green. I acknowledge that I haven't been on a commission like this before, but that might be an opportunity of someone who's, you know, eager and excited and can have a new perspective.
Thank you. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been a member of the community. I'll do a follow-up question to that. So you read through a bunch of these meetings, and you, the dialogue that went back and forth between the different members over any XYZ project. With your background as an architect, what argument do you think you, without getting specific, how do you think that your, your training as an architect would in somehow may have swayed an opinion about something that was in front of, that they debated? And what, how do you feel that that will add to the, the mix in the room? Because when the CPC, CPA committee is, you know, by statute is comprised of certain individuals, and then the council, we get to add two members of the general public. But there's only, and when you look at the makeup, you have, you know, you have one person that's basically from the Historical Commission as an appointee to it. But other than that, a lot of them, you know, they have broad, different, they come from different areas. So to add you to the mix, how do you think that you could affect some change?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, for example, it seemed to me like there were a lot of projects that were involved, restoring windows, restoring... One that comes to mind is the stained glass window at Green Lawn Cemetery. Sorry, at the chapel at Green Lawn. Yeah, I think the expertise I could bring is perhaps some dialogue with the people presenting these projects about maybe less expensive alternatives or other opportunities to achieve what they're going for and maybe, you know, try it a different way, maybe save some cost. Or maybe to reinforce when they say, we got six quotes, we really do have to replace them with this kind of window, and that's the only kind of window that works. I could at least be a, a second, you know, affirmation of saying, yeah, I've seen that. That is what's required to fix this kind of problem.
When we talk about affordable housing, what, what elements of affordable housing are important to you? I mean, things like universal design, different housing types, average median income, access to transit, adaptive reuse. What sort of things stick out to you that you would look for in a project?
I really don't want to have like my own personal, like, you know, things I adore. So like, adaptive reuse is sort of my focus in my work and what I love the most. So I would not want to have that, I wouldn't want to bring my own agenda. That's something I care about, but it's certainly not the only important thing in affordable housing. One thing that I think about, when I think about how Salem can do better looking forward, is actually relating to the first question I got, which is sort of where we build in Salem. You know, the water is coming, and so we should be preparing for that. And so when I think about affordable housing, historically, people build affordable housing in inexpensive land, and inexpensive land tends to be that which is susceptible to water damage. And I would want to avoid that going forward. I, I think that's something that we could, we could not fall into that trope of what other cities have done. So I think if I have one, like, agenda item that I come, that carrying with me, that's one of them, is thinking thoughtfully about where we build and why.
And I guess just, if you, if I think back to when the CPC was first created to today, and if you ask the average person in 2012 versus today what they thought the biggest needs in Salem were, I suspect that, that answer would have changed and would have shifted over time. What, in your mind, what are the biggest needs that you see in Salem that the CPC can help with?
I, I do think it's housing, at least in my experience with people in the, in the area, talking about the things that... I mean, I think open space, recreation, these are amazing things. They improve all of our lives. And again, my hobby horse is preservation. I love that. But when I am in the community, talking to people, and people tell me sort of what concerns them, I do feel like housing and how unaffordable Salem is becoming when it used to be the affordable option. I, I feel like that's going to be our major issue in the coming years. So even though it's not my training per se, it would definitely be the, the thing that I would think is the most important that this committee can help solve.
And then I, the last question is, just how have you worked with people when you've disagreed with them strongly in groups?
So there's a trope about the personality of an architect as being sort of difficult, and I certainly... I like to think that I don't have that. But no, my, my job is essentially to take the dreams of the clients and the reality that the contractor tells me and help them mitigate this disagreement. And so I feel like most of what I do is helping people see eye to eye when they don't. And so I have a lot of experience with that. I don't love conflict, but I certainly deal with it every day at work. And my methodology, or my, my attitude, my approach, is just that everyone's coming to the conversation in good faith. And so as long as you just respect what both sides are saying, and there is always common ground. Everyone always is, no one's out to get you typically. So as long as you approach a conflict with that in mind, I think they become kind of easy to solve. She says, hopefully. I don't know. Sometimes they're not easy to solve.
Any other questions for Kate? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we'll have Jeremy.
Jeremy, can you remind me on your pronunciation again? Is it Mealy?
Mealy, yes.
Mealy, okay.
I'd just like to thank you all for having me come in to speak tonight. I first came to Salem in 2013 as a freshman at Salem State University. I lived here until 2017, when I graduated, and then I moved back here in 2019 after I completed grad school. And I've been here since. I love this city, and I believe in public service. I believe in leaving your community better than you found it. And because I follow Counselor Cohen on Facebook, I saw his post that there were some vacancies on city boards and commissions. Doing a little research into which boards and commissions had vacancies, the one that really stuck, uh, excuse me, stood out to me was the Community Preservation Committee because of its project of supporting affordable and community housing in this city. As a renter myself, I understand the precarious position many people can find themselves in when it comes to housing, especially as we are leaving the era of pandemic era additional social safety, security. Those extra federal benefits are going to start disappearing, and we're going to see a lot more crunch on working class people. I think as a renter, it's an important perspective to bring to this commission because it's, it's renters and people who need to secure housing that this commission is partially built to, in order to support. I also very much appreciate the project of supporting recreational areas in the city. And as someone who used to work for the city for about six years at Pioneer Village and The Witch House, I certainly have an appreciation for the deep history and importance of presenting that history to people. We're not just a Harry Potter store, for lack of a better word. We are an actual historical location, and it's important to be able to preserve that history, reflect upon it, and be able to present it to the people who visit. So overall, that's why I was interested in this commission.
Thank you. I'll just point out that it's 2022, and Jeff Cohen is a social media influencer, apparently. Any questions for Jeremy? Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Hathworth. To keep things equitable, I'll ask the same question. How could we improve funding for smaller projects concerning the CPA allocation? I understand that ranking has a lot to do with it. However, there are a lot of projects that are always not funded and are always on the smaller side. Seems like the bigger fish always get more bang for their buck. But if you were appointed to the CPC, how would you advocate for the, make sure the smaller projects at least have a seat at the table?
Well, of course, it's going to depend on a project-by-project basis. But fundamentally, there's probably not going to be a project that's small. It's going to be important to somebody. And if I'm on this commission, I want to be there to listen to everyone as they make their case and support them as necessary.
And if I may follow up, when I mean small, I mean the actual dollar amount. I know some projects request hundreds of thousands of dollars, some are requesting, you know, 20,000 to 30,000. So that's what I mean by that.
Well, also, it's important to not leave any money on the table. You know, if we are supporting a big project, for example, in affordable housing, we should also be looking into whatever's money is left over for those smaller projects. We don't want to, as I said, leave anything on the table. We don't want to say that, oh, we got this money, but we didn't use it because we didn't think these other projects were important. Again, it's really important just to listen to the people that come before you, explain what they're trying to do, and give them a fair shake.
Any other questions? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Hathworth. I think we know each other outside of social media. I'm going to go back to the question I asked Kate with the perspective on sustainability and resiliency and the fact that you had some experience at Pioneer Village is a really good indicator of how deep the crisis is, not just in Salem, but everywhere. The seawell that was built, I don't remember when, maybe Counsel McCarthy knows, is obsolete. It's covered with sand, sidewalks. There's no way to keep the water from further destroying the properties in the village. They are already past the point of being renovated. And so as a council, we, we voted to, you know, to fund the first phase of moving it to where the Camp Namkev is. So just want to get your perspective on how resiliency and sustainability would affect your view of projects that are before you.
Well, obviously, climate change is real. It's happening. And as a coastal community, we do stand to be affected by it if thing, if drastic measures aren't taken to reduce our carbon emissions. That's not necessarily the remit of this commission. But I understand your question overall is, what do we do in the face of this problem if it's not being properly addressed at the state, at the federal level? I suppose what I'd have to say is that, again, it comes down to a project-by-project basis. But if we're talking about, for example, affordable housing, already we are seeing people being left behind. Right now, in today's Salem news, there was a report saying that 30% of the Salem population is either living in poverty or hovering around that line. Already, people are being left behind. So we don't want to make new projects that aren't going to be protected against the effects of climate change. We, you, we can't just put them in the danger zone, for lack of a better word. We need to make them weatherized. We need to hopefully make them sustainable, green energy homes. And that, the same goes for any project that might come before the commission. We have to take into effect what's, we have to take into consideration, excuse me, what's happening. And we have to make sure that anything we're doing to preserve historic buildings, to build new buildings so that people can find shelter, to build recreational areas, aren't going to just be wiped away by the sea in the next 10, 20, 30 years.
Any questions? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for joining us. Same question you've heard me ask a few times, right? Why the CPC? Why now? Why you? And please do speak into the microphone.
Sure. So, why the CPC? Again, when I was reviewing the boards and commissions that had vacancies, it appealed to me that this commission was charged with supporting affordable community housing in this community. This is not the first time I've volunteered to support affordable housing in the city of Salem. I applied to serve on the Affordable Housing Trust, didn't get in. But this is something that is an area that's very important to me. Housing fundamentally is a human right, and I think we as a society don't do a good enough job of recognizing that fact. Again, I'm a renter myself. I know how precarious living in the city is. Espec, excuse, bless you. How precarious living in a city is, especially in an area with as much poverty as we have. We need to make sure that we are supporting the creation of places that people can actually afford to live in. And we need to make sure that these homes are places that people actually want to and can live. Just to refer to a question that Counselor Hathworth asked earlier. What is important in affordable housing? Well, it's making sure that people can afford to live there. And it's also important to make sure that it is something people can actually use. If you're stuck at the edge of a city and you don't have access to public transportation, you can't get to your work, you can't get your kids to school. It's not going to be a feasible solution to you for your housing needs. So it doesn't matter if we have it, if it's not somewhere that people can realistically live, that people can realistically support their family on. And I think as someone who lives as a renter himself, who's trying to start a family here in this city, that that is a perspective that's important to bear in this commission.
Thank you. And I guess you answered my question. I think about the affordable housing. And so I guess I'll ask about open space. So what, what sort of things do you look for? When you think about investment in open space, you think about things like connections to walking trails or climate resiliency or agricultural uses. What sort of things are important to you when it comes to open space?
I would definitely say climate resiliency would be way up there. Again, we don't want to be supporting projects that are just going to be swept away by the rising tides. It's also important that people be able to get to the recreational areas that we support the creation of. This, a recreational project by the city should be something that is accessible by everyone, accessible to everyone. That is something that's going to improve the lives of everyone, bring welfare to everyone. It's, we can't be in the habit of just creating a space that you need to drive to, for example. We need to make it available to everyone so that we're not creating inequalities based on income level. It's very important that kids of all backgrounds have somewhere that their parents can take them to, to spend the day outside, to go and play, to explore the natural world. And so ultimately, as I said, it's really about accessibility for me, that we're pursuing projects that anyone can use and that could bring a smile to a kid of any background's face.
Thank you. And then I guess, unless there's any other questions, the final question, just how do you, how do you work with, or how would you work with people if you had disagreements or just sort of conflict within a group?
So in my day job, I am a mild-mannered librarian. And as with working in any public service job, you encounter people who, for lack of a better word, can be kind of belligerent. My wife sometimes teases me that I have a practiced neutrality. I like to think that I'm a person who's able to keep a level head. I like to think I'm a person who can see things from other people's perspective. And so if there are disagreements, I don't, I don't make it personal, and I don't go out of my way to see said disagreement as coming from a malicious place. We all have different backgrounds. We all have different perspectives, life histories that inform why we do, why we, what we do, why we think what we think. And it's important to remember that everyone's a person, I guess. And, you know, they, you know something that they don't know, but at the same time, they know something that you don't know. And when you're working together as a group especially, you need to be able to have that dialogue, to be able to speak to each other and not just past each other. And I think... to be able to speak to each other and not just past each other. And I think that in my role in public service, I have developed a thick skin for dealing with people who sometimes are not charitable, and still treating them as I would like to be treated.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any other questions for Jeremy? Thank you. And last up, Ed Moriarty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Madam President, council members. I am honored to be on the CPC, and I humbly ask the opportunity for another two-year stint. Why? Education, training, and experience, I think, is a good fit for this important committee. Education, undergraduate degree in political science, so I'm familiar with the analysis of conflict, both municipal and on higher levels of government, state, national, and international. In terms of training, I've been an attorney for 40 years. Forgot to mention on my resume, actually, for about 10 years, a law firm that I worked with in Melrose was actually the city solicitor for Melrose. So I'm very familiar with the important interaction between ordinance, statute, and local public policy. Often, there's a conflict between public housing, between open space. And sometimes, we are limited, for example, or also even in terms of resiliency. Sometimes, we may be limited in terms of what can be done because of state statutes or ordinances. And in terms of experience, I suggest that I have substantial experience administering the CPC, and also getting the CPC up and running. When we had no plan at all, we came in and created a plan, which is the blueprint from which we apply applications to determine eligibility, and then to determine funding. So based on those factors, I hope you'll give me favorable consideration, and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ed. And appreciate your service over the last almost 10 years on the CPC. And I know that we've all had a chance to observe. But if you have further questions for Ed, Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ed Moriarty, for serving our city for so long. I had the pleasure to know you for many, many years. And your work is very valuable for the city. Knowing you and knowing the record that you just mentioned, and the importance of the experience that you project, what do you think is the highest challenge that you see that the new composition of this commission will face day one, if you may?
I think there is a necessary conflict between what we've all been talking about tonight. I hear from my friends on the council, important issues about what happens to the small projects, what about issues of resiliency, what about public housing. It's very, very difficult for the CPC to be a leader in those areas. I would humbly suggest that that is an area of policy where the city council and the mayor needs to lead. I would suggest, are we not a little bit, in terms of our opportunities to advance the ball for the issues that we're talking about, aren't we a little bit of a follower because of the nature of CPC? We receive applications. We must determine, first of all, whether they are even eligible. And then, we have to wrestle with a very limited budget over so many different projects. So I think it's a constant challenge for CPC members from day one to tomorrow to determine what are the current needs of the community, but what are the applications? There may or may not be a consistency or a conflict between them, and you may not have an opportunity to fund all the projects that you want. So I think it's a constant problem that the CPC faces in terms of issues that perhaps the CPC or the majority of the city might want to promote, versus what are the projects that are actually submitted. And then, there's a limited number of projects that can even be deemed eligible because of important legal standards that have to be met to determine whether or not you even fit into the necessary boxes. So I think it's a constant conflict between aspirations for a better community, with better public housing, with more resiliency, with open space, with parks that are safe and open to everybody, versus the applications that we see. And you know, we see applications from two different buckets, if you will, from city departments, and then from private petitioners who have 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status. So I think we do the best we can to pivot to the need that's most obvious to the commission vis-à-vis the applications. And I think that the commission did pivot in the respect of, if we're talking about affordable housing, I think it did pivot, not this year, but last year, and gave an unprecedented proportion of its million-plus dollars to housing. So I can only hope that in the future, if there is a crisis in terms of health, in terms of housing, in terms of resiliency, we would see more applications that reflect that, and then we would provide more money in that regard.
Counsel Verella. Thank you, Chair Hapworth, and thank you for answering my question about smaller projects. But seeing that you have been a member for quite some time, I'd like to get a little more specific with that. For example, the walking bridge at Forest River Conservation, Salem Sound Coast Watch, I believe, requested $96,000. And in the end, they were only awarded a little over $60,000. Projects like this are very important for our resiliency, and I believe it should have been made a higher priority. You know, a project like this, it's about accessibility, and it's about safety. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on why it wasn't, for this example, rated at a higher priority, as I see that this project is not even about, like you said, accessibility, but it's about safety. That bridge is in disrepair, and it's very dangerous.
Well, again, you're running into a little bit of a problem in terms of what is the community need versus what is the eligibility requirement. So to be honest with you, Counselor, I don't specifically remember that project, but I'm just going to point out to you that that project had to establish eligibility within a particular guideline, whether it's, I guess it would be parks and recreation. So it would be, but by the same token, we can't do maintenance and repair, so you have to establish a different need in terms of park or recreation. Maybe it's an upgrade to the parks or something like that. So really, I think, with all due respect, I think our hands are tied a little bit more than perhaps the council is aware of in terms of what we're able to do. But I can point out myself, I believe that there should be as much funding as possible for as many applicants. And we should be leery of funding super projects. And I was in the minority. I was the only person who voted against a gigantic project that indebted us for a decade to assist with changes and upgrades that were needed and necessary and are great at our football field. But that took away from so many other projects because we committed, I forget what it was, in excess of a million dollars over 10 years. I felt it was better to have smaller projects funded, and let the city council fund other issues that are eligible for CPC funding, but are not necessary to meet its purpose. And I like to think, as I argued that night, that the CPC is responsible, and the entire Commonwealth, for actually putting together the small projects that you're talking about. And you don't necessarily see the value until you step back, and then you have a beautiful quilt of all of these wonderful projects, like the bridge you're talking about, or maybe some of the small parks that we funded or things like that. So I think you have to be careful about funding mega projects, even if they're necessary, at the expense of smaller ones. I would not do that.
Thank you.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Thank you for coming in tonight to speak with us.
My pleasure.
So you're our only incumbent, so to speak, so I have a little bit of a different perspective that I'd like to ask you about. I'm interested in what you've said so far. I think, in listening to your introductory comments, I think I've heard you talk quite a bit about the process, and quite a bit about the standards, and what you feel like you're capable of doing within that process and standards, and how that's important to understand. And I do appreciate that, because we likewise really operate within a process and standards, and we can only do so much within that. I do, however, feel it's really important, and I've had this conversation with some members of some other boards, I do always feel it's really important to put forward their perspective, that what we do as policymakers is inherently limited in some ways. And when we have volunteers such as yourself, members of the public, serving on commissions and boards, oftentimes, that's really where the rubber meets the road. And nothing that we do as policymakers can really be executed for the city by us in a vacuum, right? We really rely, we rely on folks such as yourself to really help execute the city's priorities. And I think even in hearing you talk about your role, I can hear from you that you have an appreciation for that, because I heard you talk about, you know, dealing with the applications that come in front of you, but also realizing that there was a moment where the CPC had an opportunity to throw a lot of force behind the housing initiative when the opportunity came, because it came over time, right? And I hear you talking about the philosophy of trying to approve a multiplicity of projects versus mega projects which are going to require funds over time. So there are always opportunities to execute priorities. There are always opportunities to make decisions that are of import within the boundaries that you have. And so, what I'd really like to ask you about is less about the process, and more about how you see the arc of the body over time, because you are the only applicant we have here who's really been with the body for a long time. And so, I'm curious what your sense is of the ways in which the body has been successful over that time, the ways in which it has grown, the ways in which you think it still has some room for improvement. I mean, what's your real feeling about the work that's going on in the CPC?
Well, I think that there is some procedural barriers to doing better. Just for example, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly, but under the state statute, for example, every CPC in the Commonwealth is required to put an equivalent minimum amount of money in every area that is supposed to be funded. So it is impossible for us, even if we believe that the need is great and immediate, it is impossible for us to fund 100% of every affordable housing project or public housing project that's before us. But with that being said, my experience over the years is that historic preservation and restoration is one of the values that is recognized by the state statute and is funded by the CPC. If the applicant establishes that, the applicant is entitled to it. Because Salem has so many historic structures, applicants, whether the city or private, are constantly appearing before the CPC with a myriad of proposals. In my humble opinion, there has been an untoward tendency for the CPC to recognize the importance of Salem's history, perhaps at the expense of open space and recreation and affordable housing. That's my opinion as one member. I think my votes would reflect that. Historic preservation and restoration is important, but there are other values that are also significant that should be taken into consideration. For example, if you want to use an example, there has been multiple requests from historic facilities for work on windows that we talked about. That is something that is not maintenance. It's structural. The CPC funds it. But at a certain point, it seems as though we have been inundated with those type of requests. So I would caution the CPC that perhaps you would score them at a lower level, just because of the multiplicity of similar projects, where others that have different values and have different priorities are not being funded. I'm not against historic preservation, but I would say there's been an arc of pushing a bit too much on historic preservation and less on recreation and public housing. Just my opinion.
Thank you. And I realize I'm putting you in a tough spot by asking you these questions, because this is all public, so I really appreciate your candor, because it's important.
And I don't make policy.
So, but I appreciate your answer. And I want to, I want to draw a little bit of a line between tenure and experience for this next question. I think experience matters in just about every job, but I think I can point to almost any role and say, there's going to be two people who've been there the same amount of time, and they don't have the same level of experience. They don't work the same, right? So I want to ask you what you feel you have learned, what you have taken away from the time that you've spent on the CPC that makes you a different commissioner now than you might have been 10 years ago when you first began, based on that learning. And I want to ask you, what is your motivation for wanting to continue to do this? Why do you care? What's the passion here? What keeps you coming back to this?
Well, one thing I think I've learned, if, I'm sure Counsel McCarthy will recall this, several years ago, there was a very heated issue between the council and actually the city solicitor's office in terms of whether or not there can be funding of a private entity as opposed to a public entity. There was a thought, where funds are so short, why is the CPC providing funds to anyone other than city applicants? And as it turns out, the answer is, everybody is supposed to have equal footing before the law, as long as the applicant meets the requirements, as long as the applicant is a 501(c)(3), or as long as the applicant is a recognized historic resource or historic facility, and is willing to actually put on the deed that the city has an interest in perpetuity in terms of the amount of money and the property improvements that have been paid for by CPC. That applicant gets the same consideration as the city. I guess what I have learned is, although the law tells me they should be treated equally, I do think, in the days of diminishing resources, increasing inflation, I understand the arguments that people make that the city should come first in terms of important projects that still meet the requirements. So I guess I would tend to react more positively to a city application as opposed to a private application, of course, subject to circumstances. And I think the other thing that I have learned is, and that's, I think, the value that I bring to the process, is that I do think process is very important. I think there's a tendency on all members to want to approve as eligible, and then to fund all of the projects because they are so great. But there really needs to be attention to process. And I think, as the sole attorney on the board, I have consistently brought to the attention of board members why this project is probably ineligible, and on occasion, why you might find the project eligible. That's sort of the change in the arc that I've seen.
And what's your motivation? Why do you keep doing this? Why do you care?
I care deeply about, I care deeply about the community. I've lived here for 36 years. My three kids are products of the Salem school systems. My wife works here in the city. I'm in love with Salem. It's basically the only place I've lived since my wife and I got married. And I'm happy to continue to contribute, and so is she and her job. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. So I judge myself by my friends. And, you know, I have a recent friend, and hopefully, a new friend, and someone that I've been friends with for a long time. And the paradox of how I know Ed, how I know you, is unique. I joined the Renewable Energy Task Force, and you were very passionate about an initiative that was before us. And then, I'm grateful for the many years I spent with Ed and his wife, and Dave Epley, and Mary Manning, and others, on the Opiate Citizen Task Force, which was more, less passionate and more supportive in nature. less passionate and more supportive in nature. So I know for me personally, even though maybe commissioners and board members don't dictate policy, I think we all have a lens that we look at. You know, mine is usually equity and access. And so as I look at, you know, how I know you, I just want to see if you can maybe define the lens that you use when you're serving on the board.
Wow, Jeff, that's a, that's a tough question. Well, as I briefly indicated, I try to determine initially eligibility and then funding based on due process of law, equal protection of the law, and equity. Those are the grand aspirations of our common law that goes back thousands of years to England. It's been enshrined in our Massachusetts Constitution that even predates the United States Constitution. So I like to think I'm guided by those core values, not just the laws. And because of, and thank you for talking about opioids, my personal experience and my professional experience with opioids has taught me something else. It's called humility, and I think I put that lens on as well. Thank you.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not being a member of the committee, for the record, I did vote for Mr. Moriarty in his first appointment 10 years, nine, 10 years ago. And the makeup of the percentages is 10, 10, 10. That's set aside in 5 for administrative, so to pay for the program and to administer the program. So, and after that, the remaining money can be allocated to any which one, or you can carry it over for X amount of years.
That's correct.
To roll it into a larger project. So, see, it was, you know, the, the first time it was on the ballot, it got shot down, and then the second time it went through, and then, then we were charged with this committee. And you've served on it a long time. I guess that poses my question is, which is, some of the questions I've had in my head, but you've answered. Counselor McLean always asks very thoughtful questions and gets to the root of what I'm going to ask, but I'll ask, I'll ask the one last question is, how do you feel if you were to continue, what your role would be with the leaving of Jane Guy? I mean, we all know Jane is spectacular in what she does, and she's going to be a huge loss for the city, but this is one of those committees that she would take the bull by the horns and run with. And I know that the planning department, I believe, who's taking over for Jane with, on this committee? Is it?
I'm sorry, Counsel, I forget. She's come to a couple of our meetings.
Is it Amanda? Is Amanda taking over this too? I'm not sure. But anyway, it doesn't matter. I mean, whoever it is is going to be qualified as well, but Jane, Jane was there at the beginning of this when we, as you stated, when we tried to form and when a whole bunch of people would come into us and asking us why weren't we funding city projects? And the simple answer was, the city wasn't applying for them. The city wasn't applying for projects, and the projects that were in front of us were, you know, a lot of worthy, you know, nonprofits that were asking for money, and everyone was looking at us sideways, like, you know, we should be funding city projects. And it wasn't until a couple of years into it that we actually, as a city, we started applying for them. But I guess my question would be is, if you were to continue, how do you think your experience on the committee will benefit the committee with the absence of someone like Jane who administers the program?
Well, I think that's a great question, Counsel, and I certainly echo your thoughts that Jane literally is irreplaceable. I've never worked with a public servant who is more energetic, more knowledgeable, more polite, more responsive, and rare is it that an email that you send to Jane isn't responded to within an hour or two, never mind within eight hours. So her loss, I hope, is not irreparable, but it will be substantial. I like to think that I've learned a few things about how things are done from Jane, and I think that my experience could be of assistance going forward to the new administrator because it is somewhat daunting to not only run the committee but also keep track of the budget, make sure that the budget is up to date in terms of income in, expenses out, what type of funding are we receiving on an annual basis from Massachusetts, and things like that. Jane was excellent at creating a template, but I'm sure there'll be some slippage in terms of documents, in terms of follow-up, and also in terms of, and I think I have some experience in that regard, working with the CPC Foundation, Sixth Beacon Street in Boston. Sorry, I just forget the gentleman's name, but he's a tremendous resource that Jane was always able to call upon and would provide information and also provide answers to questions that sounded hypothetical, but they were very much like issues that we were struggling with, and whether or not it was covered by CPC funding, like whether or not the CPC could fund new floating docks for our sailing program because they were on the water and they were not on the land. And Jane was very helpful in getting information from the foundation in that regard.
I think the final question, just how have you dealt with members over the last 10 years when you've disagreed with them?
My job is disagreeable by nature. I'm a litigator. I disagree with people every day professionally, in court, also in terms of committees that I'm on, in terms of bar association. I disagree with members of the CPC. You'll find that oftentimes my vote is on the different side. When the issue's over, that issue is done, and there's goodwill and comity between all members.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ed? Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
And we'll all have to say a little apology to Michael out there, but it looks like we're going to make it under two hours here. I'll take a motion. Counsel Verella. Thank you, Chair Hapworth. These decisions are uneasy, and experience in these matters is an asset to our boards, especially the CPC. However, I believe sometimes, you know, we want a different point of view on our boards going forward. So with that, I would like to make a recommendation to the full council, to Kate Martin. Counsel Verella makes a motion to recommend Kate Martin to the CPC, to the full council. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McLean. Under discussion. No discussion. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. This is, is always awkward. And as I said, you know, especially when friends are involved, I'm very grateful for the friendships I make, and I depend on them in the way I look at life and, and how I hopefully make decisions there in the council. And I, I brought up the opiate issue because I can't think of something that's more important in addressing people's helplessness and offering hope in our community. And sometimes it's easy for our society to look away for things that might be painful to think about. And so I can't thank Ed more for all the meetings I was at and all the initiatives he started there. And I'm very grateful for my new friend in Jeremy, who's my constituent and someone that I've, you know, feel is going to do a lot of great things as well in the community. But I brought up sustainability for a reason, because it's a crisis that we're not getting a handle on. And this isn't just Salem, this is everywhere. And the, you know, I'm just going to say that the concept of where we've put affordable or public housing is, is really dramatic, and I appreciate what Kate said about that because I remember talking to someone about Pioneer Terrace, because, you know, I go to the meetings every month, and someone said to me, how come those people get such a nice view? And I thought, yeah, how come? You know, like, you know, the reason is, is because that was like a really disturbed property. And the fact that people think that people who may not have the same means that other people don't have a right to what we sometimes take for granted is disturbing to me. And these are not things that we can easily change. And, you know, to Ed's point, I don't think that we should look at every board member in every committee as defining policy. But I do feel that there's a need that's not been met in our city about having diversity in our boards for sustainability and resiliency. Just because we have a board or a department doesn't mean that we've allocated the, the funds or especially the awareness. And so that's helping me frame my, my vote.
Thank you, Counsel Cohen. I'll echo those, those comments. I just want to thank just all the applicants in general. I think I, Jeremy, I appreciate what you've, what you wrote on your, on your application just around, your beliefs around service in a community. I think that's, we should hope that all, everyone in Salem looks at things that way, and unfortunately, they don't always, and we appreciate that. Hope you continue to apply for boards and look for something in the future. And I'll remind, this is just a recommendation to the full council. This is an appointment that we're making right now. And Ed, just appreciate your service and wisdom over the last decade in Salem. It's certainly appreciated. CPC is one of those things. It's very, very important, and we appreciate your service. With that, I guess if there's no further conversation, I'll take a vote. Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
Counsel Verella.
Yes.
Counsel McLean.
Yes.
And I am a yes. That's four members voting for in the affirmative. I'll take one more motion. Counsel Verella. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.